This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
So, welcome to the City Council Ordinance Committee meeting of October 4th, 2022, 6:00 PM. Councilor Riley and myself are here. Councilor Peak is not in attendance. We have two sets of minutes to approve, I believe, September... Can you just remind me of that again?
August 4th and September 20th.
August 4th and September 20th. That would entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of August 24th.
August 4th and September 20th.
August 4th and September 20th. All right. All those agree with it?
Aye.
Okay, so, public speak time. So tonight, public speak time, I just want to, before we start, just want to say, during public speak time, you'll have three minutes to talk about anything that's not on the agenda. So tonight, we're not talking about CPCs, so feel free to talk about that. Well, limited to three minutes, I will say, address the councilors and keep the tone respectfully. So, if anybody would like to... And when you start, just say your name and address for the record. And give me one second to get this time going.
I'll start.
I think, actually... The young lady at the end of the table was going to start, so...
Shelley Fornier from Maple Street. I just wanted to say that passing the ordinance would expose the city to unnecessary liability of the pregnancy centers. The deceptive practices should be dealt with at the state level, not locally. By passing an ordinance that's not been legally tested, the city's asking for a lawsuit. Even if Bethlehem House is somehow exempt, any other pregnancy center that advertises in East Hampton, including online, would be at risk of punishment under the ordinance. Spending taxpayer dollars to pass an ordinance just virtue signal that you don't like crisis pregnancy centers is reckless and irresponsible. What about all the good people, the good things that the pregnancy centers do? The Bethlehem House supports women and babies. How, and all they've gotten in return is acts of vandalism and an attempt by the city council to shut them down. The city council's trying to paint pregnancy centers like perpetrators, when in reality, they're the victims. This hostile response is driven by ideology, not facts, since the city council has not pointed to even one example of a pregnancy center, deceiving anybody in East Hampton or in Massachusetts generally. The ordinance will deprive pregnant and parenting women of vital resources by discouraging parental pregnancy centers from operating in East Hampton. If you want women to have all the resources they can get, then why would you be picky about where they get them and where they get them from? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so Laura Baldwin, Westfield. I want to be very clear, Pregnancy Resource Centers support women and babies. Therefore, you should be supporting them, if you are truly here to support your constituents. They help the poor and others struggling with money to get food, formula, clothing, packing place, car seats, et cetera, for the first full eighteen months of the child's life. Rule number one, don't disrespect any organization or company that is holding up the community you are here to represent. Bethlehem House doesn't deceive anyone coming in their doors. Everyone knows who they are. Yet, they were portrayed by the so-called ordinance as deceivers. To me, that would be equal to slander. Okay? You said you didn't have the reports. The council said they didn't have any reports or evidence that they had been deceptive. Do you know how that makes the council look? Creating an ordinance, there's no complaints, nobody's complained, but they're calling them deceptive. Not one complaint. Regarding vandalization of the Bethlehem House, their property was vandalized, where is the outcry against the social injustice here? Where is the cry for social justice for Bethlehem House? Have you acknowledged this hate crime and denounced it publicly? Have you been to Bethlehem House to express your displeasure at what occurred? I would think that people for equity and inclusion would have been the very first ones to do so. Remember, Bethlehem House is the victim here. Please listen. Pregnancy Resource Centers give women an option to keep their babies and to have children, a family. They provide excellent services that women want and need. An effort to get rid of all options for women is totally unjust and wrong. It actually platforms social injustice, inequality, in exclusivity, prejudice. Listen again. Live your life and live it to the fullest. I'd like that for everybody here. Okay? But don't try to deprive others of doing the same thing by depriving them of options. Do not impinge upon their rights to pursue their lives. That is dictatorial, wrong, oppressive, discriminatory, clique-ish, close-minded, restrictive, and tribalistic. From here on, do good in the right way. You won't regret it. Actually, practice inclusivity. Practice injustice and equality. Practice it. In closing, I have two points. Pregnancy Resource Centers are very helpful for your constituents, and they are needed by women and families desperately needing assistance. They are the victims. The second thing is, in performing your duties here, put aside your personal fancies, desires, and agendas, and do what is just and right for all. All. That's inclusive. Thank you.
That's good timing. I literally just went to zero. Anybody else like to speak? I'm keeping time.
Okay, let me see.
Bob, go ahead.
Don't start again. Good evening. My name is Bob Sasp. I'm a resident of East Hampton and reside in Three Winds or Surple. For the past three months, I've argued that this ordinance serves absolutely no value to the residents of East Hampton and exposes to taxpayers the potential of significant legal expenses to defend. For over fifteen years, the Bethlehem House has served as a support service to women who've decided to keep their baby but need help. The Bethlehem House was started by a white woman who was unable to find support to keep a baby of color. The Bethlehem House provides diapers, bottles, blankets, bedding, toys, and clothes to mothers for the first eighteen months of life. I've read numerous articles and opinion pieces in numerous local newspapers. Many of the articles indicate to me the author is totally misinformed. First, the Roman Catholic Diocese of Springfield does not own or manage the Bethlehem House. The only connection is that the charity rents space in one of the buildings and is the recipient of a small annual grant. Most of the support comes from volunteers and individuals. Second, the Bethlehem House simply provides support to women that have decided to keep their baby. For the first time ever, because of the attention brought to the Bethlehem House by this ordinance, the Bethlehem House was subjected to vandalism from cowards whose terroristic name is Jane's Revenge. We now have a woman that is a resident of East Hampton, who is the director, who has been hospitalized with a stroke, and every night goes to bed wondering if she'll be firebombed. The city council is directly responsible for bringing this activity to East Hampton. I was especially troubled that the city councillor was quoted in the paper that he introduced the ordinance because the Planned Parenthood asked him to. Planned Parenthood is not located in the city of East Hampton, and I thought the council represents the residents of East Hampton and not the management of Planned Parenthood. I was chilled when I read the article written by Ann Ferguson, who is Professor Ametria of Philosophy and Women, Gender, Sexual Studies at UMass, who lives in Everett. I quote Ms. Ferguson, "Sometimes it is morally justifiable to break the law." I would argue that the feminist graffiti defacing the property of the Bethlehem House is a justifiable moral and political act. It is free speech act challenging the anti-abortion movement. This is totally irresponsible statement that can influence people to violent action. Where do people draw the line? She also correlates to slavery, which I find appalling, especially since Planned Parenthood, the largest abortion provider in the U.S., was founded by Margaret Singer, whose initial organization was called the Negro...
That's your time, Bob. Thanks very much.
Enough is enough. I did bring copies of the article that I will share with the city council.
You're welcome to do that. Anybody else like to speak? Sure. Just make sure you say your name and address.
Sure, thank you. My name's Kathy Keltier, and I'm from South Hadley, Massachusetts. Good evening, council members and all participants here tonight. I reside in South Hadley. I attend Massa Our Lady of the Valley Parish in East Hampton, and I'm a supporter of the holy and beautiful work that occurs at Bethlehem House. The proposed ordinance targeting CPCs is an unjust, inequitable, and biased rhetoric. The ordinance is framed as protecting the public from deceptive advertising practices. Although, curiously, the council's proposed ordinance only, ordinance is only concerned, only concern is protecting the public from CPCs and not from their counterparts, namely abortion providers. I have heard the council state that the CPC Bethlehem House does not employ deceptive advertising practices. So why the preempted ordinance? Why doesn't this ordinance include abortion providers as well? Shouldn't the council also be concerned with deceptive advertising from them if they were to come to East Hampton? Shouldn't the ordinance protect the public from all deceptive practices, equally, all businesses, all organizations? Is it possible there's a hidden agenda here? Seriously, what is more deceptive than abortion providers advertising themselves as reproductive health centers? We all know nothing reproductive occurs at an abortion provider, only dismemberment and death. Shouldn't the public be made aware of this fact as well? If the council's truly concerned with protecting the public from deceptive advertising, this ordinance should be rejected and rewritten in a manner which would protect the public from all deceit, from every and all providers and businesses in the city of East Hampton. It's an unfair and unjust ordinance, and it's targeted towards one sector of the business in East Hampton. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Anybody else to talk?
I just agree with everything that you said. I think it's deceptive that what's going on with the whole...
If you want to speak, state your name and address for the record.
Nori Coleman, 52 East Street, East Hampton, Mass. There's a bigger agenda going on here with the whole deceptive practices thing. It's targeting crisis pregnancy care centers. Planned Parenthood's behind it. We all know this. And it's, they're not fooling anybody. It's deceptive what they've been doing for, since they've been open, that they've been targeting, like I said before, the minority communities, offering them death instead of helping them to live. We don't, we should offer the poor more than saying, "Oh, we're survival of the fittest. We believe that only the rich should live." I don't think we should think like that as people, as human beings. We should offer the services that Bethlehem House offers, diapers, wipes. And, you know, we are, we are people of many different faiths in this country, but I believe that all people don't believe in killing. When, when is it a mother's right to kill? Because that's what it amounts to. We've all been in the womb. Every single person here has been in the womb. So, let's be honest and say what's going on. If we're out, we're doing good works, and this is what they're scared of, and they're targeting crisis pregnancy care centers. That's all it amounts to.
Anybody else like to speak? So, just, can you spell your first name for me, please?
N-O-R-I.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Just say your name and address for the record.
My name is Dick Passgrini. I'm from Lubbock, Mass. I'm on the board of directors with my wife. I just want to let you know, the people that did this to Bethlehem House took a light bulb, took the top of a light bulb box, filled it with paint, and put duct tape on the light bulb, and then threw it at the building. And it hit the building, and it came down, and I don't know if we went by the building. Now we saw it cleaned up. And the reason why we cleaned it up was because we didn't want the folks that were coming in to pick up the baby supplies to see that and to be frightened. I mean, there was paint all over the place, glass all over the place. Bethlehem is a place of love. It's a place of love. The other day, a mom came in, backed her car, a big, big basket of all kinds of wonderful things that she can use for her baby to be, and a little girl was there, and there was a little teddy bear on top of the basket, and she started saying, "I want that, I want that." And the mother says, "You can't have that, dear. That's for your sister to be." And so Pam said, as a director, "Go get her, go get her a teddy bear." So they brought it out, gave her this little teddy bear. This little girl, like, beat that she got this little teddy bear. Pam gave her this there, nothing but love, that she does not deserve, what's happening to her. This is terrible. And to bring this up in East Hampton, I played basketball against East Hampton, and they had a heck of a basketball team back in the sixties, let me tell you. This is, this is not good. This is not good in East Hampton, let me tell you. This is nothing but, nobody gets paid at Bethlehem House. Everybody goes here for, even Pam, doesn't get paid. It's amazing. This young lady, this young lady right here, does most of the ordering. Thousands of dollars of free packing place, high chairs, car seats, you name it. They come, and we gift it to them so they can have their babies. Please, consider what you're doing. This is not right now. Thank you.
Thanks. We'll let other people speak.
Just a quick comment.
Just make sure you say your name and address.
Dorothy Parker, East Hampton. Just want to make a comment that Bethlehem House is a place, as you said, a place of love. When mothers come to us that already made the decision to keep the baby, it's not like they're making a decision right on the spot. They've made the decision, and then they come to us for help. So this business of deceptive practices and wanting to have babies get aborted, and deceptive practices, we don't do any deceptive practices because the mothers are already committed to keeping their babies and just need to...
Anyone else?
Steve Rich, Amherst, Massachusetts. Just reiterating everything that's already been said. It's really a remarkable place, the Bethlehem House. I'd love you to go and visit it. And it's really, it's too important a place to admire in this debate about abortion. Just, it's not, pardon the expression, but it's agnostic to that. It's really a place that's providing opportunities for fathers and mothers. And the stories that you're hearing are just, I've seen them many times. I've been volunteering there for about nine months. It's just an exceptional place. Anything that would jeopardize that would be very unfortunate for all concerned.
Nori, before I go back to you, I just want to see if anybody else has anything to say. And also, just one quick thing, just so, the councillor and myself, because it's public speak, we don't respond to, you know, acknowledge the statements that you make because it wasn't on the agenda, so, okay, meanwhile, so...
Stanford's in East, South Hadley, Mass. I'm thoroughly impressed with all the comments, and I agree with you. And it does seem as though Bethlehem House has been singled out. And it was mentioned about deceptive practices against this Bethlehem House, but not Planned Parenthood. So I got on my cell phone, and I looked up, we all know what Planned means. I looked up parenthood, the state of being a parent, and the responsibilities involved. So, that sort of tells you Planned Parenthood is deceptive, according to the dictionary and what parenthood needs. And I just want to say that Bethlehem House is run by ordinary people doing extraordinary things for a life. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sandra, could you mind spelling your last name for me, please?
Z as in zebra, I-E-M-I-N-S-K-I.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else that would like to use this opportunity of public speak?
This is the director of the Bethlehem House.
I'm just here to listen.
The woman that goes to bed every night wondering if she's going to get fired.
Bob, if you want to speak, I'll acknowledge you, but you're going to have to ask, just like everybody else. Nori, I know that you wanted to speak again, so...
Yeah, like, while talking about Bethlehem House, I want to commend all the crisis pregnancy centers too, huh? Bethlehem House is special to East Hampton, but this ordinance is a bigger picture. It's, this ordinance is nationwide. All over the country, they're targeting crisis pregnancy centers. The left always wants to say, "Well, you just, you just want babies to be born, but then you don't help them." Well, these crisis pregnancy centers are helping women. That's what they're doing. They're empowering women. And no woman, it's insulting to me to even have such an ordinance as a woman because I know the difference between an abortion mill and a crisis pregnancy health center. I know the difference. I'm not, I don't think any woman goes to a place that's a crisis pregnancy care center and thinks that they're going to get an abortion there. It's just, it's not, we're not stupid. We're not stupid creatures. We have more sense than that. So the whole ordinance is an insult to women.
Just a quick comment, if I could. One second. Just say your, are you done?
Yeah.
Peter Biggins, Chickapoo, Massachusetts. I attended a number of the meetings, and the council, the people who introduced this ordinance for consideration, said that hearing all the testimony about Bethlehem House, this clearly wouldn't apply to them. They don't have to worry about it. That's preposterous to face. They wouldn't introduce this if it weren't for Bethlehem House. Who else is even applying it? You expecting crisis pregnancy centers to flock to East Hampton or whatever? This is done for Bethlehem House, obviously. To say otherwise is a lie.
I'd like to speak. I'm Mark Reed. I live on Everett Street, and this is right in my backyard. And I wanted to know why nothing was done to catch the people that are doing this vandalism. And, and if, do you know if anybody was caught, or if there's still an investigation? And I know tons of kids in the neighborhood. They're afraid. They used to play in the neighborhood. It's gotten a little quieter since this stuff has happened. These are kids, man, and I don't get what, what, who wrote this ordinance? I'd like to know who wrote it, who came up with it, and for what reason? Where was your reason, and who wrote it? You can't answer now, but you have to answer in the future, right? Because I asked that question. I would like to know who wrote it and why, and what's your, what were you trying to accomplish for writing this? All right? And I live two seconds behind it. It's right behind me. And I'm done.
Is there anyone else?
I want to finish with one thought.
Well, again, the young lady beat to the first thought. So I'm going to, I'm going to acknowledge her first, and then I'll get to you.
I'm going to also send in an email, but I wanted to just share this about the Jane's Revenge. You can Google it and find it yourself as well. But the group has claimed responsibility for active vandalism and firebombing of anti-abortion offices in class. And then I also have the pictures outside of what it was that was done for some of you that may not have seen them. And so the blue, the purple sticky for the pictures start. And I thought it was kind of an ad piece that should be added, and I will still email them as well, if I discuss over.
Is that it?
Yes, thank you.
Bob? I want to be very clear that if the ordinance is passed, the city of East Hampton will be sued in federal court. No ifs, ands, or buts about it. Okay? So think about that, and think about your responsibilities to the residents of East Hampton as being good stewards of their taxpayer dollars. Thank you. All right. Thanks very much.
I think, unless, does anybody else have anything you want to say?
Can I just say one thing?
Yeah.
Dick Passgrini from Lubbock. I just want to thank you for giving us an opportunity to be able to express my feelings about this going through.
Is this, is this specifically for this ordinance that are in this...
So it was put on the agenda.
Yeah.
Because I wasn't able to talk to the clerk to let her know exactly what we were covering tonight, which is a council of aging pay plan. Super interesting to all of you, I'm sure. But the reason why there has been a wait is we were waiting for the city solicitor to review the ordinance to get some feedback, so we, as a committee, could discuss it in an informed way. So I will say that this is something that we will discuss in a meeting specifically discussing the ordinance. And that is probably going to be, depending on our schedules, in the next two weeks or so. It will be, it will be posted, yes. And just a couple of, like, general comments if everybody's done. I will say that the council has acknowledged the vandalism and, you know, a couple of times, I believe, now. So that's one thing that I think is really important, you know, as members of this community, you know, that we all can agree that that is not something that's okay. And I think that the other piece is that, you know, as we move into this, there will be some room for public speak, but I think as we get into the actual discussion of the ordinance, the ordinance committee is going to need to have a space to discuss this. So I'm going to have a very brief public speak at the meeting where we're discussing this. Generally, I have, I have a feeling of where you all stand. So I don't need to necessarily hear it again. I would like to actually dig into the ordinance and talk about the specifics of it. And so that's what we're going to be doing, obviously. You're welcome. I'm going to have an abridged public speak, so if you have something that you didn't get to say tonight, you will have the chance to say that, but you'll get to observe the process. And the next time where you'll have an opportunity for interaction and input would be at the public hearing. So, process-wise, we'll look at the ordinance. We'll decide whether we want to bring it to the full council or not. If we do bring it to the full council, it's going to be two different paths. It's going to be set a public hearing for it, so we can vote it up or down, or it would be a dismissal without prejudice, which just means we're going to do something different. And that's generally the path that most ordinances take. So just be aware, there is more opportunity to have input. But the next meeting, like I said, it's going to be more abridged public speak time. And I'm fine with it tonight, so if you have more to say, then say it. Because we literally have a council on aging pay plan thing. It's not going to take us very long. But again, I have a feeling of the sentiment. And so, you know, I appreciate everybody coming out and sharing that, you know, so we have an idea of, you know, where, what the public sentiment is. Bob?
Just a question. The meetings are open, meaning while you're debating the ordinance, people can be in attendance?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, just, you know, I'm going to ask for people to not interact.
Yeah.
Yeah, so absolutely. No, we're not going into executive session, or we're not having a closed meeting or anything. No, public meeting, open to everybody. Whoever wants to observe the process is open to it. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
All right, just wanted to ask a question. What about sending you emails?
Yep, you can absolutely send us emails. And I believe, if you go to easthamptonma.gov, you can find all of our emails there. And you probably just cut and paste, and you can send them to all of us with one click. Very convenient.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
Is this on the agenda tomorrow night?
So tomorrow, we're not meeting. It's a holiday. Thursday. So we're meeting on Thursday, and it is, you'll see it on the agenda, under ordinance, but it is not, since it's in committee, it's not something that we're going to discuss at the full council. So if you're interested in coming to the full council to discuss this particular issue, you'd probably be better off reading a book.
So just to be clear, there will be no discussion of this issue on Thursday?
Nope, nope, and I can, I can confer with the president of the council, but...
Okay.
Because it's still in, it's still in committee. And they're actually, the only reason it got put on our agenda for tonight was because I wasn't able to communicate with Barbara in time when she needed to post the agenda, so she's put everything on there. So generally, our agenda will have exactly what we're talking about on it, but we weren't able to... And so, but I do appreciate everybody coming, and I will say that if you are interested... And I will say that if you are interested in amending Chapter 7, Section 7-1, 7, Exhibit A, Classification of Employees, adding the position of COA Program Manager at grade level D, you're welcome to stay and see how that process unfolds. Otherwise, if you do, if you do decide to leave, which you're welcome to, I just ask that you don't congregate in a, in a space that, where it's gonna disturb us. So just if you're gonna congregate, just go to a place, maybe outside, to talk. Just because we need to try to conduct this business.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I do want to say one thing. I want to thank everybody in this room for coming tonight for Bethlehem House and to support us. And I know there's many other people that have waited here when they have another meeting and when it's more important to be there. So I'm sure we'll get a notice about that.
Yes. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Salem, Jersey.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, so. They're all on easthamptonma.gov. Send it. Yep.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
This is toward my integrity for this council.
I'm glad to hear it. Okay. So, so we have a request from the Human Resources Director, Emily Russo. Did I say that right?
Yes.
Okay.
The Italian, very Italian.
I don't know why. And so this is a position responsible for planning, planning, developing, organizing, implementing a variety of programs for the Council on Aging, including civic, social, cultural, recreational wellness. I can appreciate that. Manages the production of both regular activities and special events. Oversees the maintenance of and marketing of the center's activities and the events, and works to develop relationships with the city departments, related agencies, organizations, businesses. Assists the director of the Council on Aging with needs assessments, program evaluations, fundraising, provides customer service, admin support, and physical and logistical support for programs and events. The grade D classification is based on skills, education, and responsibility required for the position. So the proposed grade and wage range is D, $21.94 to $28.80 an hour. Okay. So welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Is there anything specifically that we should be considering as we look at this from your end, since you put this forward?
My end? I'm gonna leave it to Cindy to explain the position a little bit, because it is her department. If you guys need clarification on grade, stuff like that, that's gonna where I'll step in a little bit more. So, but I will leave it to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
First, let me say, so I started a year ago with the Council on Aging as director and learned what everybody's work sphere was. What were they actually doing? What were their job descriptions meant to be? And then what were our needs? So during budget time, when we were planning for this coming fiscal year, so back in January through, you know, March, what I realized is that the work we were doing in, I would say, maybe half of our positions didn't really match the job descriptions. But you can't change everything all at once.
Right.
And the type of work that we were doing during COVID changed, okay? And what happened is that the way that we were before COVID, and maybe even a bit before that, was that we were powered by a huge number of volunteers. In fact, I'm told that we had 100 volunteers at one point, compared to the maybe on any given week, five to 15, that we have today. And that while the positions have changed over the years, primarily we were like a kind of social recreational center with some social services and transportation. What happened during COVID is that we became far heavier on social services, health, and transportation for basic needs. And then the activities that we had, what we were finding is that we needed to really support people who are dealing with so much loss, isolation, increasing issues with getting their basic needs met, more income pressures, and so on. Though, how does that relate to the program manager position? In two ways. First of all, the kind of activities the activity coordinator was organizing needed to change from simply, let's have some Tai Chi for exercise. Let's have, let's go take a walk. Let's do an art class. To how can we support people in doing those activities and provide them with the enrichment of, kind of like a more holistic approach to those activities? So if you're going to take people out walking, the people who have become increasingly deconditioned by the lockdown, not even being able to go to the grocery store, are so much more out of shape. The people who are facing even more income limitations and stressors, and then the lack of social supports, are coming to us for those exercise, art, and other wellness, and, you know, the whole list of activities that you cited, in kind of like either worse shape or with more needs, or we're just recognizing that they have more needs. To have an activity coordinator who is simply delegated to organize basic activities without planning for them better, supporting, being able to support people better without being able to evaluate how well those activities are going, doesn't make sense. You need somebody to approach it with more skill. And at the same time, so that's part one. What we needed was somebody with more skill and more knowledge and more attention to what they're doing. At the same time, we had somebody in that position who was doing those things, who was being more of a planner, who was taking on more of the strategy, working on improving the quality of the activities that we had, supervising other people and helping with it. So, so not supervising, but like more like delegating to, say, the outreach worker, why don't you come and help with this activity? And the outreach worker is grade C and this person was grade B. The old job description said that they were responsible, had a lot of this in there, that they were responsible for planning activities and so on. And that really went above a grade B. Also, it, the notion was that they were assisting the director in doing it. But when I arrived, I realized this person is independently planning. And good thing, because my job, I think everybody knows, is hu, is very broad, touches on many areas. And the relief, I realized that, when I realized, oh, I don't have to plan these activities. This person can independently plan the activities in concert with strategic planning from me.
Sure.
So it was a mismatch. The city has benefited by having a highly skilled person who's a go-getter in that position. And on top of that, the people love her, trust her, trust her judgment, and come to those activities specifically because of her. So how can we make this, how can we make what she or anybody in that position is doing match what, you know, what we need? So one answer, one thought was, well, why don't we just promote this person? But really, when I looked at what we need this position to do, it's a different job. Because as long as we are looking at moving up this grade of position, it would be better, instead of, say, jumping up one step, to go up two steps to grade D, now this person can delegate to volunteers. Now they can delegate to the new clerk that we already, that was already approved. For example, publicity. And oversee how they're doing with that, without me holding the hand of every single person all the way through every job. To have somebody at grade D, they're not a supervisor, but they can delegate under my supervision. And then lastly, that, that piece about being a strategic planner and doing program evaluation is above, as I understand it, I'm talking to Emily, a grade C. Grade C is more like, I direct you to produce a report of statistics for me that supports my grant application or my program evaluation. This person at grade D, they can be researching, what kind of surveys should I be developing, implementing the surveys under my direction. So that last piece is, okay, I think I'm leaving one thing out of this program manager notion. Oh. We don't have an assistant director. Many senior centers have an assistant director. This person is not going to be the de facto assistant director. They're not even going to be the automatic number two at all times. What we do, just to let you know, is we do have to split that responsibility. If I'm not there, we split that responsibility up. People take turns. However, this person at this level would certainly have the, the direction to represent the Council on Aging and be able to partner with other organizations. Whereas before, we were asking them, go to the library, go to the Arts Council, visit other senior centers. We were asking that of somebody who was grade B, which really wasn't appropriate. We need more than just need to be able to move around the community and partner with other groups, so that we can use our limited resources the best that we can, and also help organizations such as the library best use their limited resources. And I think if you notice, the book club initiative that's been started with the library, our activity coordinated, the activity coordinator initiated that. And the way that that's going to, the whole way that that's been organized and conducted is definitely above that level that that person is at now. Does anybody have any questions?
Counselor Riley, do you have any questions yet?
I don't think so. I mean, I feel like you've pretty much explained the situation as clearly as it needs to be explained. You know, I know that the pandemic has altered the landscape of what all professionals are doing. And in almost every instance, it meant more work. It's very rare that people have less responsibilities throughout this time period. So, you know, I think that there's the, there's the dual benefit that honors the work that the person is doing. I think that is a, it's a respectful thing to do. But then also this extra piece that you're talking about, which is that there are certain affordances and authority for changing this position to grade D. And I think that that, it just makes sense strategically. So I don't really have any questions. I just, I support making this change. It seems like a no-brainer. I just want to say thank you for the work that you do, for all the work that everybody does, including all the volunteers. So it's, to me, this is an easy thing to do.
Awesome. Yeah, I would, I would echo that. I think my only question would be, do you, do you see this kind of increase in responsibility as something that could potentially help you in the securing of grants and writing of grants and that? I don't imagine this person would be writing those grants necessarily, but I did hear you mention something. And, you know, for me, as someone who's thinking about the budget every once in a while, you know, if we can find ways to use this position to leverage, you know, more resources for you, obviously, I know as the director, that that's something that you would probably want to do. And I'm just hoping that that is something you think that this position could potentially help.
Yes, and maybe. So the yes part is, yes, obviously. So for example, there are grants that have come across our desk that we have said no to because we have not had the staffing to do the grant monitoring, reporting. And actually, some of that is really because of our building. You know, we just can't attract that many more people. We don't have the parking. We don't have the space. Like, there have been opportunities to do respite care and a memory program. We really don't have appropriate space in our building. But there are other things that come across, like, say, a marketing and communications grant. If we got one of those, how would we then increase the marketing and communications that we do without additional staff time? So that's the, yes, they could help with that. The maybe is that, so I also put in the budget that we would, instead of having a 20-hour-a-week activity coordinator, because we used to have a 10-hour-a-week volunteer coordinator and a 20-hour-a-week publicity coordinator. And those both left at the beginning of the pandemic and all those responsibilities were put on the activity coordinator and the director. So we're, I put in the budget for 30 hours. And I know that that 30 hours is, even with having the clerk, is gonna get used up very quickly. So once we have all of our hiring done, if this passes and this person, I want to give it, you know, let's say, six months and see how well are we doing with all of the work. But I can imagine eventually, it would make sense to make that position, instead of 30 hours, 35 hours, because, and that position is half on a grant right now and half on, it was all on the grant. With this, it would be half on the grant, half on the city payroll, because the grant isn't increasing for here. But I can just, so it's a qualify yes, because this person is already working over their hours. And so I just don't know, how much can we get out of them at 30 hours?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, that's a good answer for me.
Okay.
And I agree, this, this is something that is important and I think it's timely that we make it, you know, especially coming out of COVID, that we make this a priority. So I know the counsel, Pete, had texted me and said, his only concern was that maybe it wasn't enough money to. And I said, I say, well, you know, let's, let's start with this, see what, you know? And so, Counselor Gomez, do you have anything you want to add? Counselor Riley, I don't necessarily see any reason to belabor this.
Yeah, I don't think so either. I mean, sure, in an ideal situation, I think everybody in our city deserves more pay.
Yeah.
But, you know.
Yeah.
I think this makes sense for everybody involved in its perspective for the business.
I agree.
So I'm, I'm in support of voting on it.
I think that's what the, the motion should be, to send this to the full council for a public hearing. And, yeah, of course, it's in the public hearing. I don't know. I've only been doing this 20 years. Are we, are we gonna set it tomorrow, on Thursday?
These Thursday's are the right. Okay.
Got that. So I would entertain a motion to send this to the full council.
I will make a motion to send this.
Amend Chapter 7?
To, yes, to amend Chapter 7, Section 7-7 to A, to add the COA Program Director grade B for public hearing at the next city council.
I will second that. And we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
So we'll have the public hearing. Omar, what date did you say we were doing the public hearing?
November. We're doing it October 19th.
So our second meeting in October, so there you go.
And it's program manager, not director.
Program manager.
Director, clear.
And you know what? I'm feeling Counselor Riley, since we don't have any, anybody to discuss the vacant storefront, I think we'll just set a meeting for that. We'll resend invites. Just keep our fingers crossed. So I am open to, I literally muted that like five times. I'm open to a motion to adjourn.
All right, and we'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. 6:49. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thank you.